Start the meeting.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order at 9:12 in the morning. Effective March 27, 2020, the Mendocino County Planning Commission meetings will be conducted virtually and not available for in-person public participation pursuant to State Executive Order N-2920. Meetings are live streamed and available for viewing on the Mendocino County YouTube page at In order to minimize the risk of exposure during this time of emergency, the public may participate digitally in meetings by sending comments to pbscommissions@mendocinocounty.org in lieu of personal attendance. All public comment will be made immediately available to the commissioners, staff, and the general public as they are received and processed by staff and can be viewed as attachments to this meeting agenda at the Planning Commission Agenda page. Requests for tele-comment are required to be submitted prior to 7 o'clock this morning. If you requested to speak under public expression, please call in now. We thank you for your understanding during this difficult time and thank you for your continued interest. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Weedman? Commissioner Jacobson?
I am here, but I'm not on video right now.
Commissioner Holtkamp?
Present.
Commissioner Purnell?
Here.
Commissioner Perkins?
Here.
Chair Ogilvy.
Present. So I'm understanding that Diane will not be joining us today, is that correct?
Yeah, Commissioner, yes, to the Planning Commission. There was a last-minute conflict that Commissioner Weedman had. She may, she was hoping she might be in an area that she could participate, but it does not appear that she is.
Okay, and then we'll be having, oh, echoing. And we'll be having two members of the Commission recusing themselves for this vote, is that correct?
We are not at that item, so I think we need to continue with the agenda before we talk about any recusals in such, we're only, we're only on item number one of the agenda right now.
Okay, do we have a determination of legal notice?
Legal notice has been determined to be proper.
Thank you. Do we have a Director's Report?
No, no Director's Report today. Good morning to everybody.
Marilyn, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm not on video.
I can't help you with that. Are you?
Well, last time I wasn't on, it was, it was due to the, the county did not have me on.
Okay. Commissioner Jacobson, I've just offered for you to turn on your video. You're going to have to select to start your video.
Okay, I did that. And it says here, host has stopped your video. Oh, you can't, that's right.
Because your video appears to be just a black screen. Do you have a cover over your camera?
I, I forgot. I need to pull out my laptop. I was trying to do this on my, on my desktop.
Okay, well, Commissioner Jacobson is working on that. We'll go on with matters from public. The Planning Commission welcomes participation in Commission meetings. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the Commission that are not on the posted agenda. And items which have not already been considered by the Commission, no action will be taken. Individuals wishing to address the Commission under public expression are welcome to do so via email in lieu of personal attendance at pbscommissions@mendocinocounty.org. All correspondence received will be made available on the Planning Commission page. Those public comments were to be presented prior to 7 o'clock this morning. Have we had any requests for tele-comment under public expression?
Do we have any tele-comment requests for this? No, we do not.
Okay, and since those comments were to be in by 7, I think that we can go on then, is that correct?
We can, however, typically what we've done is pause for the three minutes to allow the opportunity for individuals to submit comment via email as well to the pbscommissions@mendocinocounty.org.
Okay, thank you, Julia.
Three-minute pause.
We'll take a three-minute pause, thank you.
All right, that was the conclusion of the three-minute pause during which time we did not receive any comments to our PBS Commission's email.
Okay, thank you, Julia. Then we'll go on to the consent calendar, which there are no items. So then we'll go on to our regular calendar. And today we're hearing case U 2019-0011. The applicant being AT&amp;T and Epic Wireless on the Nixon property. This is continued from our May 21 meeting. So does staff have a presentation and an alternate resolution for denial?
Chair Ogilvy, I do see you have a couple hands raised from some of your commissioners to start here.
I have a conflict of interest, so I need to recuse myself at this time.
Thank you, Greg. Madeline, you need to turn your speaker on.
I also need to recuse myself. It was felt by the attorneys that my comments at the last meeting made it seem like I was not, that I was not impartial. And so they would like me to recuse myself in this particular case. I, of course, don't have trouble with the meetings in general, but in this one case, I must.
Okay, thank you, Madeline. So it appears that we have Commissioners Purnell, Perkins, Jacobson, and myself, four members, is that correct, staff?
Yes, that is correct. We do still have a quorum.
Then we'll have a presentation from staff, please.
Before you start that, I'm going to leave the meeting. Just so you know.
Yes, no problem. Thank you, Madeline.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Mark Klauser, Planner One, Planner for this project. As previously stated, the applicant is requesting construction of a 143-foot tall wireless communications facility at 20201 Manzanita Drive in Willets. The project was heard at the May 21 Planning Commission, at which time no formal action was taken. The Commission requested that Project B continue to the June 4 meeting and have staff prepare an ultimate resolution for denial. That resolution is attached to the most recent memo sent to the Commission. The commissioners now have two options before them. One, the resolution for approval with yet to be incorporated changes from the May 21 meeting and the new resolution for denial. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions from Commissioners? Why don't we start with Commissioner Jacobson, please?
Commissioner? Yes. Yes, the idea of including faux branching on the, on the tower, was that considered?
No, that was not. That was one of the changes that has not yet been incorporated.
This is Julia Akkerkrog. At the last meeting, there was a poll done of the various commissioners. I believe it was Commissioner Perkins who inquired with the various commissioners of whether or not this was changed to a monopane design, whether or not that would change some of the concerns. And I believe the response across the board from the Commission was that it would not.
And I also believe that the applicant stated that it would, since this is a metal tower, that it would not be possible, if I remember correctly, but I could be wrong on that.
Jared, is that correct?
Basically, what the point was to be made was it would encroach on the 500% setback to the Schultz dwelling if it was increased in height due to the tree topper of the monopane. But I believe the commissioners also hit the head on the nail by saying the type of opposition that's present is more concerned about RF and safety aspects of tower, not necessarily the aesthetics. And we have done a deep dive into the data to also show that in the case. So we don't think that would alleviate their mass concern about RF exposure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Jacobson, did you have anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go on to Commissioner Perkins.
I don't have any questions for staff at this time, but I do have a question for the applicant whenever that's appropriate.
Thank you. When we finish here with the Commission staff questions, then we'll go on with the applicant. Thank you, Scott and Commissioner Purnell.
Good morning, and I do have a couple questions for staff. The first one might be for Mark. There were a couple of spreadsheets that came through in the new batch of comments. One analyzed the comments by type of comments, and the other appeared to analyze households. But it wasn't clear to me what the source of those spreadsheets was. Do you know?
Mark Klauser, I would imagine those were directly taken from the comments posted online and then analyzed.
And so, Commissioner Purnell, what often happens is if those are submitted to our office, but the person does not include their name or any information, we post them with what we've been provided, but they may appear as essentially anonymous comments because they arrived to us without any indication of who was providing them.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we should consider those of an anonymous source?
Correct. It was summarizing the comment letters that were posted. If you look at the numbering Correct. It was summarizing the comment letters that were posted. If you look at the numbering system that they use, they use the numbering system that our office used in terms of the numbering of public comments.
Okay, thank you for that.
Commissioner Purnell, that was our analysis as the applicant. We took a deep dive and did every single comment, and we put that on the Excel spreadsheet. So that was from our group as the applicant to provide that data to all of you.
Okay, great. Thanks for that clarification, Nick. And then I did have a question for Deputy County Counsel this morning. On page four of five of AT&amp;T's letter that we received, paragraph two, it's implied that local governments are unable to deny applications where there is a gap in wireless service. And I was just hoping to get some comments from counsel on whether or not you feel our hands are actually tied on that, or whether we actually can weigh the impacts of the project and, in good conscience, make a decision one way or another today. Because again, the comments from AT&amp;T have applied that we will be unable to deny this project.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, I think I can state with some amount of authority that yes, there are many federal provisions and federal rules that strongly are in favor of wireless facilities and putting them in there. That being said, I think the case law differs by the various circuits and even within the various districts within each circuit in each state. So based on the letter we received yesterday, and it's sitting the law, can I say for certain that everything in this case would necessarily line up for or against where those precedents stand for our district and our circuit? That's going to need additional analysis and additional time to do that. That being said, those cases do involve fact-specific determinations that involve both allowing for public comment, and that public comment can be evidenced. I think we'd have to say that going forward, AT&amp;T may well try and, if they wanted to appeal any denial, this would be something we would review further at that point in time. So I'm not willing to say 100% that the county's hands are bound at this point based on this letter. But I would say that there are strong preferences by the federal government to see these towers put in place. I would say that action is required in certain timelines, timeframes, and regulations do want there to be certain standards met with those denials. One reason of which is being in writing. And that's one of my comments at this point.
Great, thank you. That's appreciated, and that's all for my questions at this point.
Okay, thank you, Allison. And I did not have any questions to the applicant. So I think at this time, we'll ask the applicant if they have any additional comments to add. And could you please, I believe probably Nick and Jared will be coming on, and perhaps others, but could you please state your name and who you are with when you come on, please? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners and Chair. My name is Jared Kiersey with Epic Wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T. Again, thanks for having us here today to discuss this AT&amp;T proposed wireless facility near Pine Mountain. You know, currently, we don't have too much to add. We believe the community spoke up, showing their support and need for the services by demanding this project to get approved. The facility will allow them to have reliable communications for all sorts of real-life situations. These reasons, expressed reasons, were mainly surrounded by safety around the community, being able to call 911 inside or outside of their house, getting advanced warning of fires, enhance their homeschooling and work-from-home capabilities, or simply being able to use and enjoy modern-day technology while living in their beautiful area of Willets, California. After breaking down and analyzing the public comment data, it should really no longer be a belief that more people in the community within two miles of the facility don't want the services versus wanting the services. It is unfortunate, but it's also understandable why that misconception was present last hearing because it was so challenging to sort through all of the emails, all of the data, public comments, and it's, you know, I think a true misconception was there. So now that we were able to dive into the data, more additional letters of support came in from new people in the community. And that now shows, you know, 35 supports versus 27, 28 opposition. And then we received additional letters from first responders, of course, reminding everyone of the vital services in these areas of the underserved rural areas of the county. And then, of course, Willets Unified School District wrote in in their support. They know what's coming ahead of their students and parents in the area of Willets and the challenges they'll truly face. So really, we have not much more to add in terms of the design or the project layout. We hope that this exercise cleared up any misconceptions, misunderstandings, et cetera, by breaking down the data. And we're happy to answer questions or comments or whatnot. And if my colleagues, Nick or Donna, have anything to ask or add, please feel free.
Thank you, Jared. Nick or Donna, did you have any additional comments?
This is Nick Taggus with Epic Wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T. I don't have anything further to add. I think that was quite eloquent what Jared spoke. The only question I have is a lot of the comments that came in leading up to this hearing today that were in support of the project were requesting that the public comment period be reopened so that those folks who aren't support could speak today. I only ask if that is an intention of the chair to reopen public commenting.
Yes, it is, Nick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank staff. I think we can all agree over 170-some public comment items were forwarded to the Commission for this hearing today. And I know that that was quite a bit of work for them to manage. So we really appreciate not only the work on the report itself, but also the handling of what was a very involved public discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Are there any questions of the applicant from any of the Commissioners?
May I jump in with a question?
I'm sorry, excuse me. I didn't understand. Is that you, Scott? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question if that's all right. Yeah, so for the applicant, households nearby this tower, if they were to connect wirelessly to this tower and use that connection for a mobile Wi-Fi hotspot in their home, what range of download and upload speeds could households expect?
The minimum requirement of download speeds is, I'm sorry, Jared Kiersey with Epic Wireless on behalf of AT&amp;T. The minimum download speeds that AT&amp;T is required to provide is 10 megabytes download and 1 megabyte upload, I believe it is. But the true speeds that are seen from actual towers deployed in rural areas is upwards of 25 megabytes per second to 50 megabytes per second of download speed and 10 megabytes upload speed. We've had the luxury, and luxury is probably a bad word, the great opportunity to witness a lot of these towers being deployed, mostly in Eldorado County and Plastra County. And while some were being opposed heavily, such as this, the tower went in. It's not a nuisance, and folks are ecstatic of the types of services that the tower is providing. They can stream Netflix. They have great connectivity around their properties on peaks and valleys. So it is quite reassuring to what we are trying to provide to these counties when we are hearing from people actually using these services. And it makes satellite, for instance, the old DSL copper lines, that's kind of the comparison that's being made when comparing to satellite internet.
Okay, thank you. The reason I ask, the California Public Utilities Commission did a study on Mendocino County that only 75.2% of households have access to reliable high-speed internet, which they define for their report as six megabits per second down and one megabit per second up. And what you're saying is that this tower would exceed those minimums, it sounds like, easily.
Yes, they're required to exceed that minimum.
Great, thank you. That's the only question I have.
Commissioner Purnell, did you have any questions for?
No additional questions today. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jacobson, did you have any additional?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you. Then we will reopen the public hearing. And at this point, I believe the clerk or staff will note the correspondence and telephone calls received. Is that correct, Julia?
Yes, thank you. And first off, you know, apologize. We have some background noise. They're doing construction in our building. So you'll hear some loud hammering above us, and I apologize in advance for that. But yes, so at this point, there was correspondence received. All correspondence received prior to 5:00 p.m. yesterday has been posted to the item. And then I'm going to look at our clerk to see if we had any additional comments that came in overnight and whether or not those were posted to the item. And he's confirmed, yes, those were all posted. And then we do have some requests for telecomments as well, whenever you are ready to begin that.
Okay, thank you, Julia. Then this is the point where we will address any telecomments that have been submitted, their form, any telecommenters, commenters that have submitted their form and are waiting on the line. Their clerk will read the list in order and call the next speaker. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes, and you will be timed and notified when there is only one minute left. Staff will announce, how did I say that? Speakers are asked to please address their comments to the meeting chair and to refrain from using profanity or engaging in conversation with staff. So I believe we will go ahead with the first telecommenter.
So just bear with us one moment here. We're going to have to switch over and bring over our first telecommenter. So individuals in the public, if you submitted a telecomment request, please go ahead and call into the number now, and we will bring you over. Please do make sure that your YouTube video is muted. I also want to note to the public, with this webinar service, you do not need to be on YouTube, and you can still participate in here at the meeting when you just log into the webinar. So first up, we're going to have Amber Youngstrom. And we'll have our clerk bring them over into the meeting here. So just bear with us one moment. There we go. So Amber, we now have you on the line. Please know you have three minutes, and I'll announce when you have one minute remaining, and your time begins now.
Okay. My name is Amber Youngstrom. I was born in Pine Mountain and have lived here for 15 years. The future is unclear, but I would like to live here for many more. The only thing preventing that is the cell tower. I would like to be given the choice to use internet when necessary and not to be bombarded by EMS 24/7. I finished my last year of middle school today. Since the stay-at-home order began, I have been using a laptop to complete my studies. Sure, there have been challenges, but I didn't need full-time Wi-Fi to accomplish that. So I have no need for this tower to receive my education. My dad is affected by cell towers and Wi-Fi, so it would be hard to live a healthy life under the influence of the tower. And that is my future also. And that is why I do not want a cell tower anywhere near my home. So please deny this tower. Thank you for listening to a young girl. And that is all I have for comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amber. So it looks like the next person we have up is Roy Geller. And we'll just have a moment here while our staff brings them over into the meeting. And let's see here. We'll wait till they come onto the line.
Yes, good morning.
And Mr. Geller, please state your name for the record and know that you have three minutes. I'll announce when you have one minute remaining.
Yes, my name is Roy Ed Geller. And I have heard many claims that we don't need the cell service, that there are other advantages, other opportunities available, like Comcast or satellite phones. But none of these can provide the same safety provided by the cell phone. Only cell phones can provide this service both in and out of the home and with or without electricity, as well as to someone that has emergency in their car. Our loved ones are driving up and down this mountain every day. Currently, our neighborhood is in a dead zone. We have had many auto accidents by our home, including a death, rollovers, and even people being trapped in their cars. Cell service is not available for them to call for help at this time. The ability to immediately summon help can be the difference between life and death. In the United States, thousands of people living today would not be here if it hadn't been for the communication provided by the cell towers. During the fire a few years back, we were not able to be contacted by the Sheriff's Department. Lucky for us, our neighbor woke us up about 3:00 a.m. to see the fire headed our way from across the canyon. Last lines are no longer reliable nor economical to replace. Yet, we must be able to both receive warnings and be summoned help when needed. You have received correspondence from our local sheriff, fire chief, first net responders, and other stressing the safety needs that this cell tower would fulfill. Today, many need for the ability to work from home in order to provide for their families. Our students' education is dependent upon being able to access the internet. You have received a letter from the school district stressing the need for internet service in order for today's students to get a proper education. The world as we know it today can't operate without this technology. And it has been explained our water lines have not been destroyed by the thousands of trucks that have used them over the last 50 years. The few extra trucks needed for this project will not change this. You have received a complete analysis showing who opposes and who supports the tower. It is now apparent that the majority of the folks who live within two miles of the tower site want and need the services of the tower. Many of those that do oppose the tower only oppose it because they don't like the location. I request the Planning Commission to approve the project to prevent the community from losing the proposed services possibly forever. Because of the CTR, there are no additional properties or locations that can host a wireless facility legally. That would be at an elevation that would allow the facility to meet the coverage needs near Pine Mountain. Thank you.
Thank you. So then next up, this will be just a little bit of a shift here. We're going back now to Cynthia Reiser-Jevon, so just bear with us while we bring her over into the call. Just shifting individuals here, so. And let's see. So it does not appear that we have Cynthia yet in the meeting, but just bear with us one moment while we bring her over.
Hello?
There we go. Now we have you, Cynthia. So Cynthia, please state your name for the record and know that you have three minutes, and I'll announce when you have one minute remaining, and your time begins now.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all of you who have invested so much time and energy into this issue. I have several very important concerns. One is that we live in a very high-fire zone. And I do live on Pine Mountain. I have lived here for 28 years now. And it has come to our attention that radio frequency waves do increase plant stress, which reduces their cell walls and increases their essential oil content and volatile oil emissions, which basically means that plants are more at a fire risk. They're more likely to catch fire because of the stress of radio frequency waves. So that obviously puts all of us who live on the mountain at a higher risk of fire because of the radio frequency and microwaves that would be emitted by this tower. And of course, would be emitted by this tower. And of course, um, the health and safety of everybody on the mountain is of utmost concern. I am also concerned because, um, many of the people who are in favor of the, uh, radio wave pollution that the tower put forth are not acknowledging the very real health risks that this tower provides for the neighborhood. And that means people are gonna be more unhealthy, and nobody is taking responsibility for the well-documented, um, health, negative health effects of these radio waves. And, um, I would ask the commission, um, and AT&amp;T, who is responsible for the increased health problems that neighbors will have? That includes neuropsychiatric disorders that are well documented from radio waves, and, um, as well as, um...
One minute remaining.
Thank you. As well as autoimmune disorders and cancers, very well documented from radio waves of these. So which of our neighbors that is in favor of these towers are willing to take the responsibility for any health effects? And AT&amp;T and Mendocino County, um, if this project is approved, need to be, um, fully responsible for health effects that are detrimental because of this tower. So I am very concerned, and I thank you all so much for your concern and time.
Thank you, caller. So we do have one additional, uh, telecomment, and I just want to announce again, if there's any other individuals who submitted a telecomment request form, please call in now. So our next caller is David Drell, and David, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes, and I will announce when you have one minute remaining, and your time will begin now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, um, I guess I would say, number one, that Madeline Holcamp's recusal is illegal. There is no legal, uh, I am not aware of any legal requirement where, where, uh, so-called bias are, uh, is, uh, is a reason for recusal. The only reason for recusal is, is for money issues having to do, uh, and in the case of the other commissioners where they have a cellphone, a cell tower on their property. But, but, but the perception of being biased or not, uh, in essence, being biased, is not a reason for recusal. So, uh, so Commissioner Holcamp was given inaccurate information and was forced to recuse illegally. And so it's, as far as I'm concerned, this meeting, uh, is not legal. And, uh, uh, so that's number one. Number two, I think the commissioner should not take at face value the claim that because there's a gap, which you have not been given any evidence of any kind of communication gap, that, that with a gap, uh, you cannot, uh, deny this project. Uh, there's no evidence of that. You haven't been provided with evidence. As far as I'm concerned, you should ignore that, and, uh, and just do, uh, what you proposed to do at your last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that concludes, that was all the requests for telecomment that we, uh, that individuals have called in for. So at this time, uh, we would recommend that the, uh, chair take the three-minute break to allow any comments submitted via email, so have those roll in, and then I can read those off when we come back.
Thank you, Julia. Before we take a break, I would like to address two of the items. Um, I know at our last meeting, Mark did, uh, make the statement regarding the radio frequency, um, issues, and that legally we are not able to, uh, address those. And number two, I would like to ask, uh, uh, county council regarding, uh, Mr. Drell's comments. So before we take the break, could we, uh, get responses from both of those, please?
Uh, sure. So this is, uh, Julia Ackers-Croggs. So we have, the Federal Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six includes provisions that discuss that if a tower has, or a project has demonstrated compliance with the FCC standards for radio frequency emissions, that a project cannot be denied based upon radio frequency emissions. So that's what it really covers, and then I will allow Deputy County Council Matthew Kudrowski to address your second question.
Deputy County Council Matthew Kudrowski, uh, there is case law regarding, uh, bias being a reason for recusal. So Mr. Drell is incorrect. I'd also note, he is not, uh, a council of any sort to the county, uh, and therefore reasonable to, uh, be either getting legal advice or haven't been taken. Um, secondarily, on the issue, uh, your, your second question was, what again, Chair Ogle?
Uh, well, that, um, has already been addressed by Julia. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, no, sorry. Chair Ogle, you asked what the gap in coverage not being significant. And that was a second point that Mr. Drell raised. That is, in fact, one of the tests the Ninth Circuit doesn't use. It is one of the two prongs of that test. The first being there being a significant gap, and the second being whether this tower is the least intrusive means. So again, there are regulations and there are cases in regards to, uh, what AT&amp;T's attorney has posed.
Okay, thank you. I think that was all the questions that, uh, that I had. Um, I'm not sure, I probably, at this point, we should take our five-minute break for any other comments that come in, and then resume if there are any other telecomments. I believe it is, Julia, is that correct?
Excuse me, I was muted. Uh, it'll actually be a three-minute break.
Three-minute break?
Okay. Thank you. So we'll pause now. Okay, thank you. That was our three-minute pause, and during that time, we did receive about five comment letters. Uh, these various items have been posted to the website. Um, there are, there's a couple longer items in here. I don't know if the commission would wish that I read these into the record, or if you wish to view them on the agenda item on our, our webpage.
Uh, personally, I would prefer to have them read. It's a little difficult for me to try to go back and forth. Um, but how about the other commissioners? Uh, Commissioner?
I feel the same way, Marilyn.
Okay, that's no problem. You know what? I will go ahead and just read them. So I'm gonna start off with the first one here. This is from Maya Youngstrom, and it says, "Two commissioners and staff, we have lived on Pine Mountain for fifteen years. We are opposed to the construction of the cell tower. Study after study has been done around the world. They have shown us that our current wireless technology is harmful to both people and the environment. It is damaging the DNA of future generations and life on Earth. We must find a better way. We can still have access without a tower in our front yards." And then in parentheses, "My neighbor put an extender on her house and has perfect coverage. There are many solutions without taking away our human rights. Thank you for taking the time to consider this issue carefully. Maya Youngstrom." The next letter here is from Kathy and Dave Ortiz, and it reads, "Dear Chairman Ogle and fellow commissioners, we hope you will pass this resolution and deny this project from going through. The staff should consider looking into other alternative projects or other sites that could achieve AT&amp;T's goals. Thank you all for your consideration in this matter and for hearing our voices, at least the best you could in this virtual leg. Sincerely, Kathy and Dave Ortiz, twenty-two-hundred Nantana Drive." This next letter is from Amy Dawson, and it appears they're in Casper, California. It says, "Members of the planning commission, Boris Johnson, Prime Minister of Britain, recently stated that," and in parentheses, "I care of, phrase, "technology can be used to keep every citizen under around-the-clock surveillance, transmitting your every detail more oppressively over the human race like a black thundercloud or indelible score in the ether. Click by click, we are becoming our resource, a resource ourselves. Digital data is the new oil. Real-time censorship is happening in real time. Digital authoritarianism is an emerging reality with far-reaching unintended consequences, including our human psychology. He should know, for Britain is one of the most surveyed countries on the earth, he also stated that whatever science we've advanced has been punished by the gods. Wireless and microwave are not only a social slash psychological threat, they are a serious human health threat. Dr. Deborah Davis on the dangers of wireless, and there is provided a YouTube link, and this is available on our, our website again." And then, uh, the letter continues stating that "The Federal Communications Commission adopted the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-five, which was written by lobbyists for the industry with no congressional oversight. The Harvard Law Department has called the FCC a captured agency, in other words, co-opted by industry. It does not have the people's welfare in mind. The original research establishing the standards for safe exposure to microwave radiation was done alr, done already over twenty-five years ago on a two-hundred-twenty-pound man with a twelve-pound head. The holster holding the phone was twelve inches from his head. The exposure was for six minutes, far from the reality of young children with soft skull tissue and developing brains having a wireless device pinned to their heads for up to hours a day. Most phones, when tested, are shown to exceed standards by a factor of five. Wireless transmission depends on pulse energy. The current generation of so-called smartphones transmit at speeds up to two-point-four billion cycles per second. 5G devices will transmit at speeds from five billion to one-hundred-billion cycles per second. When a call comes into a cellphone, it boosts to maximum power for the duration of the call while, while the device is held against the head. This will be irregularly pulsed energy, playing havoc with our body's natural electromagnetic fields. 5G emissions cannot go around or get through anything. We would require a multiplex of antennas one hundred, two hundred yards apart, meaning that they would be on every street corner. There would be no escaping their emissions, and by law, we would be required to live with them. Several hundred European scientists have filed a petition to the UN asking for restraint. 5G has not been tested. It will, however, be tested on us, you, and me, our children and grandchildren. However, by the time the effects are known, it will be too late. All of our bodily systems resonate at natural frequencies. This is how our body systems and indeed all of our cells communicate with each other. Disruptive cycles and disease and damage is the result. Natural DNA repair is disrupted. 5G frequencies resonate with our skin, our largest organ, and one responsible for eliminating toxins from our bodies. The skin is full of sense receptors, and experiments have shown that emissions to cause the sensation of the skin being on fire. End parentheses, weaponization, question mark. There are documented confirmed cases of firemen living under a 5G installation who have brain damage. Russian studies show that there is damage to the eyes. There is not, this is not something that can be modeled in the laboratory. So testing for RF safety is problematic and has never been done. There is also a real psychological and social threat from wireless technology. Cellphone radiation causes dopamine to be released in the brain. Dopamine is the brain chemical associated with addiction. So most of our population, including infants and children, are be, are becoming addicted to this technology. As a result, they are failing to make personal bonds with other humans, or learning to relate, which is extremely important to their development as human beings and good citizens. They are being indoctrinated several hours a day by commerce, industry, and other forces wanting to mold their minds to a prescribed form. The effects on public education are real. Modern students are failing in basic subjects. Their intelligence and reasoning capacity are being undermined. Many students stay up well into the night while their devices, rather than, on, into the night with their devices, excuse me, rather than sleeping or doing homework. The blue light emitted by these devices interferes with the release of melatonin necessary for a good night's sleep. Students come to school tired, zoned out, and unprepared. Wireless radiation has been shown to create brain fog, or zoning out, or lack of focus. Wireless schools seem like the anti-thesis to good educational policy. 5G is an unnecessary invaders technology that should be refused by this commission and our county, state, and federal governments. Thank you, Amy Dawson, Casper, California." And then our second-to-last letter, this is from Linda Gabrielson, oh, excuse me, Linda Cardona-Gabrielson, and it says, "Dear Chairman Ogle and fellow commissioners, please vote to approve the denial resolution for this proposed facility today. This denial addresses my concerns and those of many of your constituents. I appreciate your thoughtful considerations of this issue. Perhaps a broadband alternative can be explored for this service area or facility site that is more remote from such a dense community. Respectfully, Linda Cardona-Gabrielson, Pine Mountain homeowner." And then I have one additional that I'm going to read out of the email here, so just bear with me for a moment. Uh, this is from Anna Marie Vilel, and it reads, "Dear Commissioners, the applicant did submit this misleading analysis in parentheses, conflict of interest, and also the fact that it was anonymous information makes it very suspect. They forgot to analyze the one-hundred-seventy-five signed petitions against this tower versus thirty-four in pay growth. The analyst does not even know what EMF is. He wrote EME. As 5G reaches six-point-two miles, you need to consider all these people as well. There is no guarantee that this tower is reaching four-hundred-fifty square miles due to topography, vegetation, et cetera, as they indicate. It is only an estimate. The Willits Charter School is a sensitive receptor who is four-point-six miles away. There is no undated notice of public hearing in new staff report. There is no new updated staff report, whereas attachment S or the condition of approval number twenty-seven in the new staff report. The fire danger is in a very high-fire zone on this particular property. The analysis in the RF emissions compliance report only analyzes twelve antennas, not thirty-six, and first net. They can, about another permit, add twenty more feet and co-locate more servers. As of today, out of the one-hundred-eighty-one public comments, one-hundred-thirty-one opposed the project and fifty-one supported." And there was a link provided, um, for, it looks like, a list of cities, towns, councils, and countries that have banned 5G. And sincerely, Anna Marie Vilel." And that concludes all the public comment that was received for this item.
Thank you, Julia. So at this time, I believe we'll be closing the public hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, just staff have, yes, go ahead.
Sure. Before the public hearing is closed, will there be an opportunity for the applicant to address any final comments made by the public about the tower to correct the record about some of the details of the project?
Yes, there will be. Thank you, Nick. Does staff have any final remarks?
I would like to just address the last comment as well. We explicitly stated that on the record about the need for posting a revised notice. I just want to be clear. When an item is continued to a date certain, there is no requirement to re-notice that item. So there was only a memorandum prepared to update and provide the alternate resolution for denial as the original staff report remains unchanged. So that concludes my remarks. But I believe Director Schultz has some remarks.
Yes, I just, this is Brent Schultz, planning the building services director. I'd be remiss if I did not read the FCC. And I am very, appreciate everybody's comments about radio frequency. But you know, our staff has to work through a lens of our ordinances, our general plan, state and federal statutes. And I gotta just read this out. Section 704.7v3 requires that any denial shall be in writing and supported by substantial evidence contained in the written record. Section 7074b4 prohibits denial on the basis of radio frequency emissions. If those emissions are below the standards as determined by the Federal Communications Commission. I have read the report. This one is below those standards. So we don't have any substantial evidence of, in our record here, that I can see about radio frequencies exceeding that standard. So I just want to make that clear. And I stand by our staff's recommendation that the planning commission approved this with conditions. That concludes my presentation to the commission.
Thank you, Director Schultz. Any other remarks from Mark, Julia?
Thank you. No further remarks, but of course, we are available for questions.
Okay, and we have already closed the public hearing, so we'll go on to questions or comments from commissioners. Well, we start with Commissioner Jacobson.
I do not have any comments, additional comments at this time.
Thank you. No questions either?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Then we'll go into Commissioner Perkins, please.
I have many comments or questions at this point either.
Thank you. And Commissioner Purnell.
I do have a couple of additional comments, including wanting to thank everybody for their comments and the many creative ways that you got those to us. We do take the time to read those and take those into consideration. And I especially appreciate the letters from Willits Unified School District as well as the Little Lake Fire District. I share their concerns and their passion for education and for public safety. Regarding the Telecommunications Act, I hope that it is becoming clear that while the discussion of health issues is not prohibited, our ability to deny a project based solely on the health impacts is not something that we can do so long as the radio frequency emissions are below FCC standards. And for this project, they are. So while I'm appreciative, again, of health and safety on all levels, that is not a consideration that we can legally utilize as a basis to deny this project. And to the point also of 5G, I hope it's clear to the community that this is not proposed as a 5G tower and that we continue to hear that 5G technology is not currently feasible for Mendocino County and may not ever be feasible. It's a question mark. But concerns over 5G are also not a rationale that we can use to approve or deny this project because this is not proposed as a 5G tower. And to those concerned about 5G, I would suggest it could be useful to put your efforts into a county-wide 5G ban if it's something that you feel that strongly about. But you know, coming after projects that aren't 5G projects, it's, that's a separate issue. That's a separate issue from what we have before us today. So with all of that said, I still feel with all of the considerations that we have to weigh when we make these local land use decisions, that there are some overriding impacts to the community that do need to be considered. Those are aesthetic and beyond. Those are some issues that are inconsistent with our general plan and also with our wireless facility guidelines as laid forth in the alternative resolution today. And that's all I have to say at this point.
Thank you, Allison. And I do have some comments. I don't believe I have any questions, but I would like to say that per the comments between May 19th and June 3rd, which was yesterday, we received comments with, if I'm correct, and I may not be because the numbers seem to be kind of fluctuating, but I had 31 in favor and seven against in the comments. And I did want to address comment number 142 from Roy Ted Geller, where there were, in the area, there were 38 yeses and 55 nos. That being said, 26 of the 38 live in the Pine Mountain area. On the nos, six live in the Pine Mountain area. Excuse me, also 34 signed a petition in favor of the cellphone tower. I would also like to say that I did go to the site yesterday. There were lot gates, so I wasn't able to go to some of the properties, specifically the Ortiz and Nixon property. I did talk with one of the property owners there. I could be wrong, but it seemed like that property owner is above where the Ortiz and Nixon property is. And they probably would have the most view of the tower. They are, and they have also written in letters supporting the tower and mentioned most of their neighbors that they have talked to are in favor of the tower. So based on my viewing and driving around the area yesterday and the other comments that have been received, and thank you, Allison, for addressing, once again, the fact that we cannot address the radio frequency. And I too am concerned about the health issues, but that is not something that we can address. And I also appreciate you making it very clear that we are not looking at a 5G here. So those are my comments. And I do know that the applicants did want to go ahead and address some, make comments and address some of the issues. And after that, we'll go back to the commissioners to see if there are any additional questions or comments. So with that, can we go on with, which either Nick, Jared, or Donna, however you'd like to proceed, please? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, this is Nick Taggus on behalf of AT&amp;T. And I will just wrap this up very briefly. I believe AT&amp;T has made a significant and substantial case that they're not only fulfilling this extensive coverage gap for AT&amp;T customers in this area, but also for the benefits to the community with high-speed broadband internet. That's not only going to be very affordable, but very reliable, as well as bringing in the first net services. But more to the point of the community here, and I'd like to address all four of you commissioners who are weighing this today. The data points to, the closer you get to this proposed tower, the more support there is for this tower. The data shows that the average supporter for this project is approximately a half a mile away from this tower proposed location. The average person who's opposed to this tower, the average distance is 7.39 miles away from this tower. So I would only urge you to really think about, the closer you get to this tower, the more folks who are actually going to receive the benefits of this tower are more in favor of this project than not. And with that, we appreciate the wisdom. We appreciate the time and effort, and we appreciate the position that you have all been put in here. And we strongly support this project for those reasons. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. Jared or Donna? Okay, I'm seeing nothing from either of you.
Pardon me, Chair Ogle, to interrupt, but it appears that our deputy county council has lost his internet access. So I'm wondering if we could take about a five-minute break just to allow him an opportunity to get back onto the line here. So that way, we can then continue on with the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia.[593.23][593.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[594.35][594.38][S04. Thank you.[594.89][594.91][S04. Julia.[595.42][595.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[596.55][596.58][S04. Thank you.[597.09][597.12][S04. Julia.[597.63][597.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[598.75][598.78][S04. Thank you.[599.29][599.32][S04. Julia.[599.83][599.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[600.95][600.98][S04. Thank you.[601.49][601.52][S04. Julia.[602.03][602.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[603.15][603.18][S04. Thank you.[603.69][603.72][S04. Julia.[604.23][604.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[605.35][605.38][S04. Thank you.[605.89][605.91][S04. Julia.[606.42][606.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[607.55][607.58][S04. Thank you.[608.09][608.12][S04. Julia.[608.63][608.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[609.75][609.78][S04. Thank you.[610.29][610.32][S04. Julia.[610.83][610.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[611.95][611.98][S04. Thank you.[612.49][612.52][S04. Julia.[613.03][613.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[614.15][614.18][S04. Thank you.[614.69][614.72][S04. Julia.[615.23][615.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[616.35][616.38][S04. Thank you.[616.89][616.91][S04. Julia.[617.42][617.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[618.55][618.58][S04. Thank you.[619.09][619.12][S04. Julia.[619.63][619.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[620.75][620.78][S04. Thank you.[621.29][621.32][S04. Julia.[621.83][621.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[622.95][622.98][S04. Thank you.[623.49][623.52][S04. Julia.[624.03][624.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[625.15][625.18][S04. Thank you.[625.69][625.72][S04. Julia.[626.23][626.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[627.35][627.38][S04. Thank you.[627.89][627.91][S04. Julia.[628.42][628.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[629.55][629.58][S04. Thank you.[630.09][630.12][S04. Julia.[630.63][630.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[631.75][631.78][S04. Thank you.[632.29][632.32][S04. Julia.[632.83][632.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[633.95][633.98][S04. Thank you.[634.49][634.52][S04. Julia.[635.03][635.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[636.15][636.18][S04. Thank you.[636.69][636.72][S04. Julia.[637.23][637.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[638.35][638.38][S04. Thank you.[638.89][638.91][S04. Julia.[639.42][639.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[640.55][640.58][S04. Thank you.[641.09][641.12][S04. Julia.[641.63][641.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[642.75][642.78][S04. Thank you.[643.29][643.32][S04. Julia.[643.83][643.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[644.95][644.98][S04. Thank you.[645.49][645.52][S04. Julia.[646.03][646.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[647.15][647.18][S04. Thank you.[647.69][647.72][S04. Julia.[648.23][648.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[649.35][649.38][S04. Thank you.[649.89][649.91][S04. Julia.[650.42][650.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[651.55][651.58][S04. Thank you.[652.09][652.12][S04. Julia.[652.63][652.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[653.75][653.78][S04. Thank you.[654.29][654.32][S04. Julia.[654.83][654.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[655.95][655.98][S04. Thank you.[656.49][656.52][S04. Julia.[657.03][657.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[658.15][658.18][S04. Thank you.[658.69][658.72][S04. Julia.[659.23][659.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[660.35][660.38][S04. Thank you.[660.89][660.91][S04. Julia.[661.42][661.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[662.55][662.58][S04. Thank you.[663.09][663.12][S04. Julia.[663.63][663.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[664.75][664.78][S04. Thank you.[665.29][665.32][S04. Julia.[665.83][665.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[666.95][666.98][S04. Thank you.[667.49][667.52][S04. Julia.[668.03][668.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[669.15][669.18][S04. Thank you.[669.69][669.72][S04. Julia.[670.23][670.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[671.35][671.38][S04. Thank you.[671.89][671.91][S04. Julia.[672.42][672.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[673.55][673.58][S04. Thank you.[674.09][674.12][S04. Julia.[674.63][674.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[675.75][675.78][S04. Thank you.[676.29][676.32][S04. Julia.[676.83][676.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[677.95][677.98][S04. Thank you.[678.49][678.52][S04. Julia.[679.03][679.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[680.15][680.18][S04. Thank you.[680.69][680.72][S04. Julia.[681.23][681.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[682.35][682.38][S04. Thank you.[682.89][682.91][S04. Julia.[683.42][683.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you.[685.09][685.12][S04. Julia.[685.63][685.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[686.75][686.78][S04. Thank you.[687.29][687.32][S04. Julia.[687.83][687.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[688.95][688.98][S04. Thank you.[689.49][689.52][S04. Julia.[690.03][690.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[691.15][691.18][S04. Thank you.[691.69][691.72][S04. Julia.[692.23][692.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[693.35][693.38][S04. Thank you.[693.89][693.91][S04. Julia.[694.42][694.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[695.55][695.58][S04. Thank you.[696.09][696.12][S04. Julia.[696.63][696.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[697.75][697.78][S04. Thank you.[698.29][698.32][S04. Julia.[698.83][698.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[699.95][699.98][S04. Thank you.[700.49][700.52][S04. Julia.[701.03][701.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[702.15][702.18][S04. Thank you.[702.69][702.72][S04. Julia.[703.23][703.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[704.35][704.38][S04. Thank you.[704.89][704.91][S04. Julia.[705.42][705.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[706.55][706.58][S04. Thank you.[707.09][707.12][S04. Julia.[707.63][707.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[708.75][708.78][S04. Thank you.[709.29][709.32][S04. Julia.[709.83][709.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[710.95][710.98][S04. Thank you.[711.49][711.52][S04. Julia.[712.03][712.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[713.15][713.18][S04. Thank you.[713.69][713.72][S04. Julia.[714.23][714.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[715.35][715.38][S04. Thank you.[715.89][715.91][S04. Julia.[716.42][716.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[717.55][717.58][S04. Thank you.[718.09][718.12][S04. Julia.[718.63][718.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[719.75][719.78][S04. Thank you.[720.29][720.32][S04. Julia.[720.83][720.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[721.95][721.98][S04. Thank you.[722.49][722.52][S04. Julia.[723.03][723.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[724.15][724.18][S04. Thank you.[724.69][724.72][S04. Julia.[725.23][725.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[726.35][726.38][S04. Thank you.[726.89][726.91][S04. Julia.[727.42][727.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[728.55][728.58][S04. Thank you.[729.09][729.12][S04. Julia.[729.63][729.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[730.75][730.78][S04. Thank you.[731.29][731.32][S04. Julia.[731.83][731.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[732.95][732.98][S04. Thank you.[733.49][733.52][S04. Julia.[734.03][734.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[735.15][735.18][S04. Thank you.[735.69][735.72][S04. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you. Julia. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council. Thank you.[740.09][740.12][S04. Julia.[740.63][740.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[741.75][741.78][S04. Thank you.[742.29][742.32][S04. Julia.[742.83][742.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[743.95][743.98][S04. Thank you.[744.49][744.52][S04. Julia.[745.03][745.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[746.15][746.18][S04. Thank you.[746.69][746.72][S04. Julia.[747.23][747.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[748.35][748.38][S04. Thank you.[748.89][748.91][S04. Julia.[749.42][749.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[750.55][750.58][S04. Thank you.[751.09][751.12][S04. Julia.[751.63][751.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[752.75][752.78][S04. Thank you.[753.29][753.32][S04. Julia.[753.83][753.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[754.95][754.98][S04. Thank you.[755.49][755.52][S04. Julia.[756.03][756.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[757.15][757.18][S04. Thank you.[757.69][757.72][S04. Julia.[758.23][758.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[759.35][759.38][S04. Thank you.[759.89][759.91][S04. Julia.[760.42][760.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[761.55][761.58][S04. Thank you.[762.09][762.12][S04. Julia.[762.63][762.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[763.75][763.78][S04. Thank you.[764.29][764.32][S04. Julia.[764.83][764.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[765.95][765.98][S04. Thank you.[766.49][766.52][S04. Julia.[767.03][767.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[768.15][768.18][S04. Thank you.[768.69][768.72][S04. Julia.[769.23][769.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[770.35][770.38][S04. Thank you.[770.89][770.91][S04. Julia.[771.42][771.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[772.55][772.58][S04. Thank you.[773.09][773.12][S04. Julia.[773.63][773.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[774.75][774.78][S04. Thank you.[775.29][775.32][S04. Julia.[775.83][775.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[776.95][776.98][S04. Thank you.[777.49][777.52][S04. Julia.[778.03][778.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[779.15][779.18][S04. Thank you.[779.69][779.72][S04. Julia.[780.23][780.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[781.35][781.38][S04. Thank you.[781.89][781.91][S04. Julia.[782.42][782.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[783.55][783.58][S04. Thank you.[784.09][784.12][S04. Julia.[784.63][784.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[785.75][785.78][S04. Thank you.[786.29][786.32][S04. Julia.[786.83][786.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[787.95][787.98][S04. Thank you.[788.49][788.52][S04. Julia.[789.03][789.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[790.15][790.18][S04. Thank you.[790.69][790.72][S04. Julia.[791.23][791.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[792.35][792.38][S04. Thank you.[792.89][792.91][S04. Julia.[793.42][793.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[794.55][794.58][S04. Thank you.[795.09][795.12][S04. Julia.[795.63][795.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[796.75][796.78][S04. Thank you.[797.29][797.32][S04. Julia.[797.83][797.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[798.95][798.98][S04. Thank you.[799.49][799.52][S04. Julia.[800.03][800.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[801.15][801.18][S04. Thank you.[801.69][801.72][S04. Julia.[802.23][802.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[803.35][803.38][S04. Thank you.[803.89][803.91][S04. Julia.[804.42][804.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[805.55][805.58][S04. Thank you.[806.09][806.12][S04. Julia.[806.63][806.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[807.75][807.78][S04. Thank you.[808.29][808.32][S04. Julia.[808.83][808.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[809.95][809.98][S04. Thank you.[810.49][810.52][S04. Julia.[811.03][811.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[812.15][812.18][S04. Thank you.[812.69][812.72][S04. Julia.[813.23][813.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[814.35][814.38][S04. Thank you.[814.89][814.91][S04. Julia.[815.42][815.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[816.55][816.58][S04. Thank you.[817.09][817.12][S04. Julia.[817.63][817.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[818.75][818.78][S04. Thank you.[819.29][819.32][S04. Julia.[819.83][819.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[820.95][820.98][S04. Thank you.[821.49][821.52][S04. Julia.[822.03][822.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[823.15][823.18][S04. Thank you.[823.69][823.72][S04. Julia.[824.23][824.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[825.35][825.38][S04. Thank you.[825.89][825.91][S04. Julia.[826.42][826.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[827.55][827.58][S04. Thank you.[828.09][828.12][S04. Julia.[828.63][828.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[829.75][829.78][S04. Thank you.[830.29][830.32][S04. Julia.[830.83][830.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[831.95][831.98][S04. Thank you.[832.49][832.52][S04. Julia.[833.03][833.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[834.15][834.18][S04. Thank you.[834.69][834.72][S04. Julia.[835.23][835.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[836.35][836.38][S04. Thank you.[836.89][836.91][S04. Julia.[837.42][837.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[838.55][838.58][S04. Thank you.[839.09][839.12][S04. Julia.[839.63][839.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[840.75][840.78][S04. Thank you.[841.29][841.32][S04. Julia.[841.83][841.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[842.95][842.98][S04. Thank you.[843.49][843.52][S04. Julia.[844.03][844.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[845.15][845.18][S04. Thank you.[845.69][845.72][S04. Julia.[846.23][846.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[847.35][847.38][S04. Thank you.[847.89][847.91][S04. Julia.[848.42][848.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[849.55][849.58][S04. Thank you.[850.09][850.12][S04. Julia.[850.63][850.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[851.75][851.78][S04. Thank you.[852.29][852.32][S04. Julia.[852.83][852.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[853.95][853.98][S04. Thank you.[854.49][854.52][S04. Julia.[855.03][855.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[856.15][856.18][S04. Thank you.[856.69][856.72][S04. Julia.[857.23][857.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[858.35][858.38][S04. Thank you.[858.89][858.91][S04. Julia.[859.42][859.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[860.55][860.58][S04. Thank you.[861.09][861.12][S04. Julia.[861.63][861.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[862.75][862.78][S04. Thank you.[863.29][863.32][S04. Julia.[863.83][863.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[864.95][864.98][S04. Thank you.[865.49][865.52][S04. Julia.[866.03][866.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[867.15][867.18][S04. Thank you.[867.69][867.72][S04. Julia.[868.23][868.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[869.35][869.38][S04. Thank you.[869.89][869.91][S04. Julia.[870.42][870.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[871.55][871.58][S04. Thank you.[872.09][872.12][S04. Julia.[872.63][872.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[873.75][873.78][S04. Thank you.[874.29][874.32][S04. Julia.[874.83][874.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[875.95][875.98][S04. Thank you.[876.49][876.52][S04. Julia.[877.03][877.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[878.15][878.18][S04. Thank you.[878.69][878.72][S04. Julia.[879.23][879.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[880.35][880.38][S04. Thank you.[880.89][880.91][S04. Julia.[881.42][881.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[882.55][882.58][S04. Thank you.[883.09][883.12][S04. Julia.[883.63][883.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[884.75][884.78][S04. Thank you.[885.29][885.32][S04. Julia.[885.83][885.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[886.95][886.98][S04. Thank you.[887.49][887.52][S04. Julia.[888.03][888.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[889.15][889.18][S04. Thank you.[889.69][889.72][S04. Julia.[890.23][890.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[891.35][891.38][S04. Thank you.[891.89][891.91][S04. Julia.[892.42][892.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[893.55][893.58][S04. Thank you.[894.09][894.12][S04. Julia.[894.63][894.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[895.75][895.78][S04. Thank you.[896.29][896.32][S04. Julia.[896.83][896.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[897.95][897.98][S04. Thank you.[898.49][898.52][S04. Julia.[899.03][899.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[900.15][900.18][S04. Thank you.[900.69][900.72][S04. Julia.[901.23][901.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[902.35][902.38][S04. Thank you.[902.89][902.91][S04. Julia.[903.42][903.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[904.55][904.58][S04. Thank you.[905.09][905.12][S04. Julia.[905.63][905.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[906.75][906.78][S04. Thank you.[907.29][907.32][S04. Julia.[907.83][907.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[908.95][908.98][S04. Thank you.[909.49][909.52][S04. Julia.[910.03][910.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[911.15][911.18][S04. Thank you.[911.69][911.72][S04. Julia.[912.23][912.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[913.35][913.38][S04. Thank you.[913.89][913.91][S04. Julia.[914.42][914.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[915.55][915.58][S04. Thank you.[916.09][916.12][S04. Julia.[916.63][916.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[917.75][917.78][S04. Thank you.[918.29][918.32][S04. Julia.[918.83][918.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[919.95][919.98][S04. Thank you.[920.49][920.52][S04. Julia.[921.03][921.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[922.15][922.18][S04. Thank you.[922.69][922.72][S04. Julia.[923.23][923.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[924.35][924.38][S04. Thank you.[924.89][924.91][S04. Julia.[925.42][925.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[926.55][926.58][S04. Thank you.[927.09][927.12][S04. Julia.[927.63][927.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[928.75][928.78][S04. Thank you.[929.29][929.32][S04. Julia.[929.83][929.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[930.95][930.98][S04. Thank you.[931.49][931.52][S04. Julia.[932.03][932.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[933.15][933.18][S04. Thank you.[933.69][933.72][S04. Julia.[934.23][934.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[935.35][935.38][S04. Thank you.[935.89][935.91][S04. Julia.[936.42][936.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[937.55][937.58][S04. Thank you.[938.09][938.12][S04. Julia.[938.63][938.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[939.75][939.78][S04. Thank you.[940.29][940.32][S04. Julia.[940.83][940.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[941.95][941.98][S04. Thank you.[942.49][942.52][S04. Julia.[943.03][943.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[944.15][944.18][S04. Thank you.[944.69][944.72][S04. Julia.[945.23][945.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[946.35][946.38][S04. Thank you.[946.89][946.91][S04. Julia.[947.42][947.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[948.55][948.58][S04. Thank you.[949.09][949.12][S04. Julia.[949.63][949.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[950.75][950.78][S04. Thank you.[951.29][951.32][S04. Julia.[951.83][951.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[952.95][952.98][S04. Thank you.[953.49][953.52][S04. Julia.[954.03][954.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[955.15][955.18][S04. Thank you.[955.69][955.72][S04. Julia.[956.23][956.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[957.35][957.38][S04. Thank you.[957.89][957.91][S04. Julia.[958.42][958.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[959.55][959.58][S04. Thank you.[960.09][960.12][S04. Julia.[960.63][960.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[961.75][961.78][S04. Thank you.[962.29][962.32][S04. Julia.[962.83][962.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[963.95][963.98][S04. Thank you.[964.49][964.52][S04. Julia.[965.03][965.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[966.15][966.18][S04. Thank you.[966.69][966.72][S04. Julia.[967.23][967.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[968.35][968.38][S04. Thank you.[968.89][968.91][S04. Julia.[969.42][969.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[970.55][970.58][S04. Thank you.[971.09][971.12][S04. Julia.[971.63][971.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[972.75][972.78][S04. Thank you.[973.29][973.32][S04. Julia.[973.83][973.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[974.95][974.98][S04. Thank you.[975.49][975.52][S04. Julia.[976.03][976.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[977.15][977.18][S04. Thank you.[977.69][977.72][S04. Julia.[978.23][978.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[979.35][979.38][S04. Thank you.[979.89][979.91][S04. Julia.[980.42][980.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[981.55][981.58][S04. Thank you.[982.09][982.12][S04. Julia.[982.63][982.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[983.75][983.78][S04. Thank you.[984.29][984.32][S04. Julia.[984.83][984.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[985.95][985.98][S04. Thank you.[986.49][986.52][S04. Julia.[987.03][987.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[988.15][988.18][S04. Thank you.[988.69][988.72][S04. Julia.[989.23][989.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[990.35][990.38][S04. Thank you.[990.89][990.91][S04. Julia.[991.42][991.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[992.55][992.58][S04. Thank you.[993.09][993.12][S04. Julia.[993.63][993.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[994.75][994.78][S04. Thank you.[995.29][995.32][S04. Julia.[995.83][995.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[996.95][996.98][S04. Thank you.[997.49][997.52][S04. Julia.[998.03][998.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[999.15][999.18][S04. Thank you.[999.69][999.72][S04. Julia.[1000.23][1000.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1001.35][1001.38][S04. Thank you.[1001.89][1001.91][S04. Julia.[1002.42][1002.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1003.55][1003.58][S04. Thank you.[1004.09][1004.12][S04. Julia.[1004.63][1004.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1005.75][1005.78][S04. Thank you.[1006.29][1006.32][S04. Julia.[1006.83][1006.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1007.95][1007.98][S04. Thank you.[1008.49][1008.52][S04. Julia.[1009.03][1009.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1010.15][1010.18][S04. Thank you.[1010.69][1010.72][S04. Julia.[1011.23][1011.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1012.35][1012.38][S04. Thank you.[1012.89][1012.91][S04. Julia.[1013.42][1013.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1014.55][1014.58][S04. Thank you.[1015.09][1015.12][S04. Julia.[1015.63][1015.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1016.75][1016.78][S04. Thank you.[1017.29][1017.32][S04. Julia.[1017.83][1017.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1018.95][1018.98][S04. Thank you.[1019.49][1019.52][S04. Julia.[1020.03][1020.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1021.15][1021.18][S04. Thank you.[1021.69][1021.72][S04. Julia.[1022.23][1022.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1023.35][1023.38][S04. Thank you.[1023.89][1023.91][S04. Julia.[1024.42][1024.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1025.55][1025.58][S04. Thank you.[1026.09][1026.12][S04. Julia.[1026.63][1026.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1027.75][1027.78][S04. Thank you.[1028.29][1028.32][S04. Julia.[1028.83][1028.86][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1029.95][1029.98][S04. Thank you.[1030.49][1030.52][S04. Julia.[1031.03][1031.05][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1032.15][1032.18][S04. Thank you.[1032.69][1032.72][S04. Julia.[1033.23][1033.26][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1034.35][1034.38][S04. Thank you.[1034.89][1034.91][S04. Julia.[1035.42][1035.45][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1036.55][1036.58][S04. Thank you.[1037.09][1037.12][S04. Julia.[1037.63][1037.66][S04. Then a five-minute break to reconnect county council.[1038.75][1038.78][S04. Thank you.[1039.29]
Clear scenario in terms of what happens moving forward with no action by the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. Then I unless there are any other questions or comments from commissioners, I guess we are looking for a motion for approval or for denial of the resolution, a denial resolution or an approval resolution. So that's where we're at.
Marilyn, I had a question for for legal counsel. I'm not clear as to we have, we have four commissioners here today, three for approval and one for denial. Why is it that we need all four of the commissioners to vote for approval to have a project approval? When we have the majority of the members here today?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, section six of the planning commission bylaws states that an affirmative vote of four members shall be required for recommendation of approval of any application which requires approval by the board of supervisors and for approval of any other application.
Okay.
Okay, once again, we are to the point of asking, or I'm at the point of asking for a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the project as submitted or as the resolution submitted by staff at the previous hearing as written.
I believe there may have been some changes or corrections and perhaps staff could go over those. Or perhaps we need a second in order to proceed and then ask staff to review the 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 resolution to approve.
Yes, I agree Chair Ogil. I would recommend you entertain a second before you review any resolutions.
Thank you. Do we have a second to the motion?
I would second that.
And then we'll go on to staff, please.
Okay, so just bear with me for a second because I'm going to figure out how to share my screen here. So we're going to go ahead and do a share screen. All right, can everyone see my screen with this resolution up there? Yes, excellent. I see head nods. Okay, so running through this revisions would first start off with a change to the date here, changing it to June 4, 2020, when action would be taken. And then it would change the third whereas clause just to note some of the history that we've had here in terms of the the processing of this permit and how it's gone to the hearing both on May 21 and on June 4. So the whereas clause would read that the planning commission on June, or excuse me, on May 21 held a public hearing at which time all relevant testimony and evidence presented orally or in writing was heard and received regarding the negative declaration of the project and continued said project to June 4, 2020 and directed staff to prepare an alternate resolution for denial. And then we would add a new whereas clause which would state in accordance with the applicable provisions of law on June 4, 2020, the planning commission heard and received all relevant testimony and evidence presented orally or in writing regarding the project and closed the continued public hearing. All interested persons were given an opportunity to hear and be heard regarding the project. And then it would continue as previously written. And then I excuse me while I scroll to our exhibit A. And so exhibit A, this is the conditions of approval. And so we would revise the date to June 4. Now, the changes that I've included in the conditions here were changes that were discussed at the May 21 meeting. So the first was just adding the word the here in the improved project description. In condition of approval one, it was removing reference to faux branches, which is not a monopine. And condition, excuse me, I'm scrolling, scrolling. So this is condition 30. We had been missing item D, which states that a final judgment of court or competent jurisdiction has declared one or more conditions to be void or ineffective, or has enjoined or otherwise prohibited the enforcement or operation of one or more such conditions. And that was that's standard language. And that just relates to if there was ever relocation or modification by the planning commission having to make these particular, one of these findings in order to proceed. Then next on condition 32, the expiration date would be revised to June 4, 2030. And then lastly, staff had prepared a memorandum for the May 21 meeting noting the additional condition needed for the road assessment. So this would be condition of approval number 34. And that concludes the revised resolution. So I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing my screen unless any folks have a question about anything I've shown here. I've seen none. Thank you.
So is it appropriate to amend my motion to reflect the changes just described by staff?
Yes, that would be just fine. And then the second does have to agree with that as well.
I second that.
Thank you. And I'm not sure what happened, but I dropped off for a period of time during those corrections, Julia, but I believe we discussed them last night anyway. So I'm I'm comfortable with asking for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Oops, he's on mute here.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Purnell?
No.
Chair Ogil?
Yes.
So the motion fails for lack of a majority.
So could you direct us and the applicant as well as to what happens at this point?
Sure. So this is Julia Acro-Crog, chief planner. So at this point, we've a motion was made and that motion has failed. The commission could entertain an alternate motion to the project. And beyond that, you're really looking at very limited options here because of the tolling agreement that we have.
So I guess I was a little unclear and perhaps county council could weigh in again. I'm really a little unclear on the motion failed, but I think there were some other comments. Perhaps county council could review that again, please.
So this is Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski. As stated before, bylaws require a vote of at least four commissioners for approval of an application. Failing that, I think we're looking at there is just no action by the by the commission. Right now, where we would stand is there is certainly under a lot of those things we talked about, tolling agreement and the federal guidelines, the permit streamlining act provisions, and also our own code is looking at a deemed approved end result of this application. And that would mean there would be something, very likely potential, you'd have no conditions of approval for this tower whatsoever. So and a lack, a less clear ability to figure out what there is for any kind of rights appeal. So that's where I think at the moment, this this would stand, it would be if without any further action or reconsideration of an action by the commission, the matter would be over. And I think staff will be left sorting out the any kind of deemed approved remedies along with AT&amp;T, given the lack of action by the commission.
A question for you, Matt, on that. Is there any role for the board of supervisors at this point? Or am I understanding correctly that this would just be a full green light today without any further action, without any conditions of approval?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, looking at the appeal section in our code, I had up a second ago and now it's gone. It really talks about an appeal from a decision determination or requirement of the planning commission or the zoning administrator, which without action by the commission, we wouldn't technically have. So as it stands, I don't know, I think it's very unclear appeal rights in the nature of a deemed approved. If the project was approved by the commission, that clearly would have a an appeal remedy in the code. And again, in terms of, you know, I have to say, well, there's a there's a tolling agreement, there's our own code sections, that's what staff would have to be looking at going forward to sort out what exactly the deemed approved remedy would be. AT&amp;T's comments were focused on the tolling agreement. I'm looking at the other statutes and how they work as well. But if there was an actual approval today, then the item could be appealed to the board of supervisors.
Chair Ogil, if I could address the commission?
Please do.
Brent Schultz, planning and building service director, I just want to point out, if this vote stands this way and it's deemed approved, we have no conditions. There's no conditions it's deemed approved, right, Matt? There's these, all these conditions we put in the resolution are no longer there. Is that correct, Matt?
If the tower ends up being approved in a deemed approved manner, then I believe the only thing you do, you're able to look to for any quote conditions would be on things that are already specified in our wireless guidelines and those requirements. So again, that there's a lot less clarity and pathways forward in that on that avenue than there would be separately in terms of a further approval and then an appeal to the board of supervisors.
If I could have a question for county council. If the project were approved today, 4-0, you mentioned that that might be an avenue for an appeal to the board. How does that impact the shot clock? Because since a decision has been made, does that mean that appeal would have to be heard at the board? Or would the timeline not be possible to hear an appeal?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, I think, I'm not sure that our counties had to deal with too many appeals to the board coming off of an approval by planning commissions. So I'd have to do some more work to see exactly, you know, there's a lot of issues involved in terms of their agreement with the applicants to a certain extent, if necessary, and then seeing how fast we can get the appeal to the board if one is even made.
Thank you.
So I guess my question at this point is, I just to kind of cut to the chase, am I understanding that AT&amp;T Epic Wireless can go ahead and build the tower without any conditions because the resolution was not approved? Or are they unable to go ahead? And I guess this is the question for county council. Is that a yes, they can construct without any of the requirements that we were recommending in the resolution? Or are they not able to construct at all?
So Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, they there it, there would be no conditions of approval as outlined in the approving resolution. That I can say for certain. When exactly AT&amp;T could go forward with any construction, that's something that we'll be having to work on as we go forward to see exactly what timeframes might come first between federal, state, and local regulations. Certainly under our zoning code, that's one mechanism. Permit streamlining has a different mechanism. And then federal guidelines and the tolling agreement is a third. So that way has less clarity in terms of how this goes forward. And but I can say our conditions of approval would not apply.
Okay, are there? Yes, go ahead, Allison.
Okay, I'll go ahead. It's very, it's very difficult to understand what decision we're making right now just because of the lack of clarity and what this would look like if this were to proceed with the deemed approval. I have a couple of questions that might help tease it out maybe. Matt, as far as conditions of approval go, I understand that these would not apply. As I look through those, I'm seeing thing, you know, there's like biological considerations, there's height of the tower, there's air quality considerations, cultural hazardous materials. Do we know which of those would or would not apply through perhaps some other mechanism? Which is to say, if they're not in there as conditions of approval, would some of those still apply? Say, for example, you know, biological resources, we've got fish, fish and wildlife. Does that mean fish and wildlife wouldn't be involved at all? Or would they still be involved?
So Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, I have to pull up that resolution and from the packet, I have the denial one open on my screen. Certainly anything that require that is part of their application, AT&amp;T applied for a tower of a certain height. So their application is going to determine some of those things in terms of that's what they are going to get. But separate and apart from that, in terms of fish and wildlife issues, if those aren't somehow imposed by a different regulation or obligation, then I don't imagine those would automatically be applicable to this project.
Okay, thank you. And I have another question. Is it, would it be possible for us to entertain a motion today for approval, but at a different height?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, that hasn't really been discussed at all by the commission. So I guess there'd be a lot more discussion to have in terms of the reasons for the modification and if everyone agreed to it. And if it's something that the applicant was even reasonable for them as well, given their submission so far. So I guess that's the best answer I have on that in terms of the reasons to modify the project at this point in time.
Okay, and I'll just elaborate on my thought process on that, which is that since we're we're kind of in a corner here on this. And so I'm wondering if there's a way for us to be able to move forward on this with conditions of approval. And if in considering a shortened tower, which I understand would, you know, that that obviously changes everything, including the feasibility of the project, but it also minimizes many of these impacts that are of concern. And so I'm just, that's why I was wondering if that was an option for today. And if so, I would be curious to hear from the other three commissioners today if that conversation is something that we want to entertain, realizing that's a whole separate can of worms.
I'll address this first in asking the applicant, because I believe this has been discussed. And if I'm not mistaken, we were told that no, it had to be at that height because of the trees and the foliage that is in the area. So once again, I'll have to defer to the applicant and ask if that would be feasible.
Chair Curzley, on behalf of AT&amp;T, thank you for the questions. But Chair Ogil, you are correct. The terrain and tree heights around this area are very challenging. Really, AT&amp;T was wanting a taller tower, but the height restrictions or the setback restrictions dropped it down. We already lost some coverage based on that. If we drop it down, additional coverage would be lost and could not be a suitable tower to meet the coverage goals for that area.
Thank you. Allison, does that answer your question on that item? And did you want to to continue on with discussion?
Well, I think we need to continue on with discussion because I'm, I'm not comfortable proceeding with a green light without conditions of approval. I think that's a worst case scenario. I'm also not supportive of the current project as proposed. A question to county council here about appealing to the board. If this were to move forward today with a 4-0 vote in favor, can't that decision can be appealed to the board, correct?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, correct?
And that's within what, a 10 or 11 day timeframe?
Yes.
Okay. Do you happen to know the appeal fee?
This is Julia Acro-Crog. I do know the appeal fee is $1,616 in order to file an appeal with the board supervisors.
Thank you, Julia. Is it possible to take a five minute break?
Yes, from the chair, we could take a five minute break. Staff, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, no problem. We'll set a timer here to come back in five minutes. So we'll be back at about 11:05.
Thank you.
It looks like we still have some commissioners coming back online though. So I'm slowly seeing cameras turn back on. And it looks like we might be missing just Commissioner Jacobson at this point. So maybe we'll pause and still wait another moment. All right, it appears that we have all commission members back. So I think we can go ahead and continue now.
Okay, thank you. And I believe Commissioner Purnell was the one who asked for a five minute break. So I'll defer to Commissioner Purnell.
Thank you, Chair Ogil. That break was really helpful trying to get my brain wrapped around the process and what we have at play here. I did have an additional question for county council. And that is this. If if I were to introduce a motion to deny and it were to fail to pass, would we, would that still result, would that still constitute a non-action and be a deemed approval?
Deputy County Counsel, yes.
Yes.
You'll end up in there being not not four members in favor of a single action.
Okay, so if we're in favor, if we're, if we're all in favor, it moves forward. And if we're not all in favor, it still moves forward.
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, essentially, yes, it's unclear, there's a lot less clarity in how it goes forward with the deemed approval, any kind of deemed approved remedy or, you know, an approval based on expiration of timelines. And there isn't a clear appeal right for anyone involved in that situation. And the alternative, if there is an approval, and there at least is a mechanism for an And the alternative, if there is an approval, there at least is a mechanism for an appeal in our code.
Okay. Thank you. This thing is going forward no matter what, is how it sounds. And so based on that, I will change my vote, not because I want to, but because I think it is in the best interest of the, the public and the process here in order to ensure an appeal process and in order to ensure that conditions of approval could apply.
So Deputy County Council Matthew Kudrowski, given that we already had that vote taken, we have to do a motion to reconsider under our rule 10 of the commission's bylaws. A motion to reconsider, the motion that was already taken today, must be made by a member who voted with the majority in the question. And then it requires a majority vote to reconsider making a motion that, the earlier motion.
Okay, then I'll ask for a vote to reconsider and a second.
As it was my motion, I'll, I'll happily make a motion to reconsider, to hear Commissioner Purnell's thoughts. I will second.
Thank you. Then I believe we need to vote on this motion. So we'll have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Purnell?
Yes.
Commission, Chair Ogil?
Yeah.
So the motion passes with an approval of this project subject to the conditions and the resolution as revised and provided at the meeting here today.
So I guess my question is, do we need another vote now to approve the resolution with a 4-0 vote? Or have we already done that?
Oh, pardon me, excuse me, Chair. I was very off in that. You're correct, you've just motioned to reconsider.
So Deputy Matthew Kudrowski, a separate motion for, of the original approval of the resolution as amended by staff is necessary.
Thank you. So then I will now need a motion to approve the adoption of the resolution, a second and then a vote.
I'll make the motion again unless Commissioner Purnell would like to, since it's her district. Either way, I'm, I'm happy.
Go ahead.
Okay, I move to approve the project based on the resolution and findings presented by staff and as amended, as described by staff today.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Commissioner Purnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Chair Ogil?
Yes.
So now I may say that the project has been approved subject to the conditions contained in the resolution that was presented today and as provided on the screen. And, and now there is a 10 day appeal period.
Okay, thank you. And I believe, I believe that the applicant understands this process. And I, I'm hoping that the others that have, have weighed in on this also understand the process that there is an option for appeal.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your time. I was just, I want to say, yes, we understand and thank you.
Thank you very much, Darren. Okay, then we'll go on to item number seven, which is matters from staff. Is there any matters from staff?
We have no matters from staff today, but of course we're available for questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing then we'll go to matters from commission. Any items for the commission? Seeing then, I would just make one comment. I believe if I'm not mistaken, Julia, there will be other cell phone tower requests coming up in the near future. And I don't know if there's any way to address some of the items that have been addressed today other than how we're addressing them. But I, I hate to see us get into one of these quandaries again. And I know that Greg is unable to vote, Commissioner Nelson is unable to vote on any of the cell phone towers issues, which makes that a six, a six person vote and we need four votes. And again, now today with Commissioner Holcamp having to recuse herself and Commissioner Wiedemann not being available, it, it's made it very difficult. So I'm hoping that, that the commissioners understand how important it is that we have at least six commissioners or five, but preferably six in order to, to vote on these issues in the future. We, on, I do an item number seven approval of minutes. We have no minutes, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Allison, second? I guess that was a second.
That was a second.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, then we'll adjourn the meeting and thank you all very much. And staff, thank you for, for weighing, if we're going ahead on this, riding up a motion of denial, even though we didn't use it. But I know it's taken a lot of the staff's time and I appreciate that. So thank you very much and we are adjourned.
And commissioners, everyone have a good day, stay safe.
Thank you.